All right. Thanks, Jared. It sounds like you've started the recording. So why don't we get going here at 6:05? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 3rd, 2022 Division of Marine Fisheries Public Hearing on a variety of regulatory proposals on issues including electronic tracking in the lobster trap fishery, protected species issues, the welt gauge size increase schedule, and mobile gear exemption areas. My name is Story Reed. I'm an Assistant Director for DMF. Unfortunately, Director Dan McKeon is unable to join us tonight due to a scheduling conflict, but we'll be reviewing all comments, both written and those that are provided tonight. Tonight, we are joined by several of our Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission members, including Chair Raymond Kane, Shelley Edmondson, Sookie Sawyer, and Lou Williams. From the Environmental Police, we have Lieutenant Colonel Pat Moran, Lieutenant Matt Bass, as well as Lieutenant James Cullen. We have several of our DMF staff members here tonight, including Deputy Director Bob Glenn, Jared Silva, who will be doing a lot of some of the talking tonight and a lot of the managing of the hearing. Melanie Griffin, Nick Buchanan, Kelly Whitmore, Tracy Pugh, and Steve Wilcox. This public hearing and comment period is being held under the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, and pursuant to the authorities found at Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 17A, 2180, and 104. The Division of Marine Fisheries is taking public comment and holding public hearings on proposed amendments to regulations at 322 CMRs 4, 6, 7, 8, and 12. These amendments affect electronic monitoring in the federal lobster trap and Jonah crab fishery, protected species regulations, mobile gear exemption areas, and the welt gauge schedule. Written public comment will be accepted through Friday, November 11th, 2022. Please send written comment via email to our marine.fish@mass.gov email address, or by post to the attention of Director Dan McKeon at 251 Causeway Street, Suite 400, Boston, Mass. 02114. We really do encourage you to submit written comments, even if you do speak tonight. It helps for us to get it accurately on the record and able to distribute to staff into the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission. All right, a brief overview of the proposals before we get into it. The first proposal we'll go over is electronic tracking for commercial lobster and crab, the commercial lobster and crab trap fishery. This would require that by May 1st, 2023, all commercial lobster permit holders with federal lobster permits to fish traps install and have operational electronic tracking devices onboard the permitted fishing vessel. Next, we'll get into a few protected species regulations. The first would allow the director to amend the opening of the recreational trap fishing season for lobster and crabs based on presence absence of right whales. The second would eliminate the weak link requirement for commercial trap fisheries. The third would improve the regulatory definition of buoy line to enhance compliance with protected species rules. The third we'll go over is the welt gauge schedule. This proposal would delay the scheduled one-eighth of an inch welt gauge increases, so they occur every third year rather than biennially. Next will be the Area 1A Mobile Gear Season Adjustment. This would extend the Area 1A off of Rockport and Gloucester Open Season for Mobile Gear Fishing from February 1st to March 31st to February 1st to March 15th, excuse me, May 15th. And then there's a variety of housekeeping issues that we'll go through at the end to clean up certain things in our regulations. And I'll hand it back over to Jared to go through some of the virtual ground rules we're going to follow tonight. All right, it sounds like we've got a reboot going on Jared's computer, so I'm going to share my screen. And we'll go over those virtual rules of engagement. Just bear with me just a moment. All right, Bob or Jared, can you see my screen?
Yes, Story, you're good to go.
Okay. So let me just go through these quickly. The purpose of this hearing is to afford interested parties an opportunity to submit data, opinions, comments, or arguments on the specific amendments being proposed, or to offer how the proposed amendment can be changed to minimize the impact on those affected while still achieving the goals. Comments on matters outside of the scope of the specific amendments being proposed will be accommodated upon the conclusion of the hearing if time permits, and of course, our staff is always available outside of this public hearing to talk about any other issues. All members of the public will be muted throughout the presentation, at the conclusion of the presentation, or of each issue we discuss. DMF will first accept clarifying questions regarding the proposals, and then once all the questions are addressed, we'll move on to public comment on that proposal. The written chat and question and answer functions have been disabled. We found that to be a distraction and hard to respond to in these hearings. DMF will respond to verbal questions at the end of each presentation. Additionally, you can follow up with any DMF staffer after the hearing by email, and we'll get back to you on any questions. When participating in the question and comment forums, the public is required to use the raise hand function. This creates a queue and will recognize and unmute individuals when it's their turn to speak. Individuals will be provided three minutes for questions and comments per hearing item. Follow-up comments may be allowed after all other persons have had an opportunity to speak. It is not necessary for you to provide verbal comment during this public hearing. You may use this virtual hearing for informational purposes and submit written comments later. And as I said, we do, in fact, like to have those comments in writing, even if you do speak them verbally tonight. We prefer that the written comment be submitted by email to marine.fish@mass.gov. All written comment is to be submitted by November 11th, which is next Friday. Written comment will be shared with the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission in advance of the November 22nd Business Meeting. This public hearing will be recorded, and questions and comments are part of the public record. The recording of the public hearing will also be posted to our YouTube channel as early as tomorrow morning, along with this presentation. Okay, the timeline for rulemaking. Today, November 3rd, we have the public hearing. The close of the public comment period is a week from tomorrow, November 11th. A week after that, on November 18th, DMF will make the final recommendations to the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission. And on November 22nd, at their business meeting, the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission will review and vote on these proposals. After that, there's a period of executive review where this, an estimated promulgation date for the final regulations of January 6th. So that's the timeline that we're working under. So now we'll get into the first proposal of the night. And I'm going to take this one. So that's good. Okay. The proposal here is to require all commercial lobster permit holders with federal lobster trap permits to install and have operational and electronic tracking device onboard the federally permitted vessel named on the state lobster permit by May 1st, 2023, or essentially before that vessel begins their 2023 season. This would comply with recent Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission addendums to the fishery management plans for American lobster and Jonah crab that have these corresponding tracking requirements. The impacted population here includes between 280 and 300 Massachusetts lobster vessels that have federal lobster trap permits. The purpose of this requirement is to improve spatial data collection in the federal lobster trap fishery. Enhanced spatial data will help significantly in marine spatial planning for things including offshore wind sighting and mitigation, protected species risk analyses, and stock assessments. Currently, the lack of fine-scale spatial data in the lobster and Jonah crab fisheries is a real problem for some of these analyses. In general, the devices themselves will be lower cost and have lower power requirements than current federal VMS units. We anticipate most will be cellular-based, and because of that, will not necessarily transmit position data in real time. When they're out of cell range, they will store data points and transmit when they are back in range. The units will not have a user interface like the current federal VMS units. An example unit is circled in red on the slide, and really what you're seeing there is a unit that in this case was bolted onto the dashboard, but it could have been put on the roof. So that's not a unit you interface with. The units get plugged into power, and as long as they have a clear signal and are secure and have a steady supply of power, you're good to go. An ASMFC committee is currently reviewing applications from potential tracking device vendors. The idea there is to approve a group of vendors to provide these tracking devices so the fishermen will have a chance to choose the device that they want out of that list. In terms of paying for these devices, a federal earmark will allow us to subsidize or reimburse for the majority, if not all, of the cost of the devices in up to three years of annual service fees. So that federal funding should be coming through just as this requirement is going into place. So we feel comfortable that we'll be able to reimburse for these devices before they're required to be on the boat. That's the basics of the proposal, and now I'm happy to take questions. I've got Nick Buchanan from our staff here, who's pretty well-versed in these devices and can help answer questions if we have any as well. All right. Sookie, go ahead.
Yep, Story, thanks. The only thing, I was a little leery when you said potentially all the costs of the thing. I thought it was pretty much cut and dried that they were all going to be paid for 100%, like the Skymates and all the other ones were.
Yeah, we've got the money to do that. What we don't have is the final cost estimate for all of the different trackers. We know there's a range. So we can pay for all of them.
Okay.
There might be one, all I want, you know, all we're saying is there might be one that's approved that's significantly more expensive. We don't know that yet. But we do know that there will be definitely some in the range that we can pay for the whole thing.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
I have another question, too, if nobody's on the queue.
You, and then we've got one more. You first.
Okay, what about guys that don't really fish in federal waters? They got federal permits. Will they be allowed to put their permits, like in federal permits in the permit history, so they don't have to deal with this, or is that an option?
That is an option, and we are working with nymphs right now to figure out, even beyond that, even if you left the permit on the boat, but you somehow declared that you weren't going to fish traps in federal waters if there would be an opportunity for a waiver there. But certainly, if it's in CPH, I think it wouldn't be a requirement.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. We hadn't really talked about that. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Story, do you have a second?
Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
So I want to clarify one thing about that. If you have a federal lobster trap permit and it's active, you can't just say that you will fish only state waters and not put a tracker. It would be too hard for us to distinguish.
So the, what we're, the question we're asking the feds then is if you're not fishing traps at all?
Yes.
Yes, whether there could be a waiver. So that's what we're working on, Sookie, clarifying that.
That's, that's a little different then, and I thought when you, what you said originally was if they weren't fishing in federal waters, but you're saying they can't be fishing at all, stayed off federal waters.
With traps, that sounds like what we're, this is, these are the details we're working through with ASMFC and the feds. Certainly, if it's in CPH, Nick, you would agree with that, right?
Yeah, so from what I understand from NOAA Fisheries is that a permit, you can't take, it's not simply an endorsement that can be put into CPH, but the whole permit must be put into CPH. So if you put the whole federal permit into CPH, we definitely are not putting a tracker on your vessel. That's for sure.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, Lou Williams, why don't you go, and then we'll go to the public with any questions?
Thanks, Story. Yeah, I was just, you know, listening with the trackers with this, you know, it sounds good with the spatial planning and whatnot and everything, but I, I just see something here that I don't think anyone's really looking at is future enforcement. You're in a closed area, you just get in the mail. If you're going now, the big one is, there's a lot of fast lobster boats around. They're pushing that over 35-foot 10 knots. A guy's going to be getting fines in the mail like the ships do when they're, when they have seen on their AIS going over 10 knots. That's a concern that I have for this being on a vessel. I think it's, it's being glazed over as, as spatial planning and stuff or other things, and to get a little more information, but it never works out that way. I just see this as an enforcement tool that's going to be used against fishermen. Thanks, Story.
Okay. Thanks for the comment. And one thing that made me think of, in terms of confidentiality, not necessarily for enforcement purposes, but in general, this data will be held to the same confidentiality standards that we hold all catch report information. So just to make that clear. Okay, and we have Beth Cassoni. I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself.
Hi, Story. Can you hear me?
Yes, Beth, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. When will we have an approved list of providers for the vessel tracking devices? We're getting a lot of questions from our members on that.
Yep, Nick, can you give us a timeline on that?
So yesterday, we reviewed all five proposals, and we expect to return our questions to the vendors. No one device has been completely approved yet. All were very close, or most were very close to being approved, so we hope within a month to have that list, depending on response time of those vendors.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Nick. Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this proposal? Okay, Beth, your hand's still raised. I'm not sure if you want to comment. I'm gonna... Nope. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So unless there's any other comments, we will move on to the next proposal. And Bob, I think this one's going to you. Just let me get there.
Sure thing.
There we go. We'll move into the protected species.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Bob Glenn, Deputy Director with DMF. I oversee a lot of our protected species work. So tonight, what we're going over is a few proposed rules that are essentially a number of things, just to kind of clean up rulemaking that we initially did back in 2021, that now we're going back and just trying to clarify a few things and kind of bring them up to speed. The first of those is a proposal that would allow the director to annually amend the opening of May 16th, of the May 16th to October 31st, buoyed recreational lobster trap fishery on a dynamic basis in response in response to the presence or absence of right whales. So for our commercial lobster fishery, we have a February 1st through May 15th closure, and we have the authority to dynamically manage that based on surveillance and either open it earlier if the whales leave, or extend it as necessary if the, if right whales remain behind. In that initial rulemaking, we didn't specifically address that authority for recreational lobster trap fishing. So in this proposed regulation, we would have, would give us the authority to do so. And so to give a little more background, as everyone knows, right whales seasonally aggregate in mass waters during the winter and early spring, primarily from the months of January through May. Recently, in the last four or five years, right whales increasingly are around in the, in early, the first couple of weeks of May. And in many cases, we've had to use dynamic management to extend the season in the commercial fishery. In 2021, a closure, a trap closure for a recreational buoyed gear for lobster fishing was imposed to reduce the risk to right whales and to reduce the proliferation of marine debris. This closure does not apply to unbuoyed trap gear fishing that occurs along the shorelines, like, for example, along the Cape Cod Canal. And as I mentioned, dynamic, we use this dynamic management regularly in the commercial fixed gear fishery. The rationale is that this allows DMF to delay the opening of the fishery if right whales remain. And it also allows DMF to allow fishing prior to May 15th, should whales migrate out of the state areas, state waters. So essentially, this just, this rule, proposed rule, would just bring the recreational closure dates in May in line with the commercial and allow us to to manage them dynamically. And Story, what I think I'll do is, well, actually, what would, what's the preference? Should I go through each protected species issue and then answer questions, or go one issue at a time?
That's a good question. Why don't we do one issue at a time? I think they're different enough.
Yeah, fair enough. That's what I was thinking. All right, so with that, I'll take any questions that folks have on this, on this proposed rule?
I'm not seeing any hands, Bob.
Okay, and then if no questions, do any of the attendees or panelists have any comments that they'd like to make on this proposed rule?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next issue.
Okay.
So the next issue for protected species is a proposal to eliminate the weak link requirement at, at the buoy and all commercial trap fisheries. So that would include our lobster trap, welt pot, and fish pot fisheries. However, we will retain this requirement for recreational trap fisheries because they don't have the same level of other requirements for weak inserts and weak links, except, I mean, sorry, weak inserts and weak rope. The background here is that the weak link requirement was eliminated from the federal, from the Atlantic Large Whale Take Reduction Plan through NOAA Fisheries in their 2021 rulemaking for the both the lobster and crab trap fishery. However, the entanglement record shows very little evidence that this particular gear modification works as it is intended. And as such, NOAA Fisheries didn't feel that it could provide any risk reduction credit, and as a result, decided to remove this requirement from the, from the regulations. Initially, when this was put into place, the line of thinking was that when a right whale was entangled, if the rope got entangled within the baleen, that as pressure was applied, that rope would slide down and meet that 600-pound weak link and then pop off. But what we found was, or at least there hasn't been any specific evidence that that, that's occurred, that has occurred. And more specifically, when we look at right whale entanglement cases, we tend to not see entanglements where the buoy line is cinched down at the terminus and where this weak link is. It's typically somewhere in the middle of the buoy line where the entanglement occurs. And that baleen actually acts like a jam cleat on the rope itself, and so the, the opportunity for that rope to slide doesn't really seem to happen. And that, and that's why NOAA Fisheries removed this rule. We did not follow suit in 2021 because in our state waters, we have both lobster trap, fish trap, and welt pot fisheries that require this rule. And when NOAA Fisheries changed their rule, they only made the change in requirement specific to the lobster trap and Jonah crab fisheries. And so because of that, any federally permitted vessels that participated in either fish potting or, and/or welt fishing would still be required under federal law to have that. And so now that that's, that's changing, we're proposing to remove this requirement in state waters. And so that's the, that's this particular proposal, and to remove the 600-pound weak link. And on this, I'll take any, any clarifying questions.
Steve Petruska, you're recognized?
Got me?
Got you, Steve.
Loud and clear. How you doing? I got a couple of comments and a question, question first. So I use the hog rings as my weak link on my, my buoys. And as far as you guys eliminating, whether it's a 600-pound breakaway or the hog ring weak link, now he's going to say you're going to eliminate it, but if you still have all your, you know, your buoys attached with the breakaway or the hog rings, will that still be allowed?
Yeah, so the, this change in the regulation would not prevent you from, from doing that or prevent using the hog rings and/or using the swivels. And we've heard from many fishermen that they'll continue to do that. It's just not a compliance requirement any longer if this is approved.
I got you. The only other comment I had was, I understand you guys are advocating for the whales or whoever's advocating for the whales, but it seems to help like if, you know, if a boat, a dragger or the boat gets it, gets it in their wheel that, you know, the breakaway just breaks or it goes through to hog rings, hog rings and the rope doesn't get tangled, you know?
Yeah, no, agreed. And for that reason, we suspect that a lot of, a lot of fishers may continue to just use these weak links and swivels.
I got you. Thank you.
Bob, I'm noticing any other questions if you want to move to comments?
Very well. So then we'll, I'll accept any, we'll accept any comments on this proposal?
Bob, I'm not seeing any comments from the public. Lou Williams does have his hands raised. Lou?
Yeah, thanks, Jared. Yeah, I just, I think we talked about this at the last commission meeting. And my concern is, I know what Bob was saying about they don't see the, the buoy getting fetched up and it won't, won't part off. I guess I'm just, my comment is, I'm going to keep using them, and I think everyone should just for that one time, that what Bob said doesn't happen. And it slides through their mouth, they get scammed with the breakaway, it'll pop off. Without the breakaway, it'll break down below, and you'll have an end line that I think I think Noah's looking for. So that's all, that's my comment. I just keep using them. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Anybody else?
Not seeing any other hands raised. Bob, if you want to move to the next topic?
Very well, let's go to the next one. Someone could advance the slide? Thank you. Okay, and then finally, the last protected species housekeeping is a, is kind of a clarification on the definition of, of what a ground line is. And so this proposal is to clarify for commercial fishers who fish trawls that they may not have more than 12 feet of ground line extending from the first gannin on either end of a trawl to where it splices in with the buoy line. All buoy lines rules then apply between connections at the surface buoy to a spot where the ground line is to be spliced to the buoy line. And so the, kind of the background with this particular proposal is that this past winter, in doing some compliance monitoring and enforcement during gear haulout, looking at buoy lines, one thing that we One thing that we we found is we have a few rules in our buoy line regulations that refer to the top 75% relative to our gear marking requirements, as well as our requirements for 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 weak inserts or weak rope in the top 75%. And then we also have another rule that dictates the amount of floating rope you can use at the base of your buoy line. And that's you're allowed the bottom two thirds can can have floating ground line. And so what we're finding is that there's no specific, well, you know, it can't, in many cases, it can be obvious where the ground line ends and where the buoy line begins. There was no specific metric by which to gauge when to start to do a calculation of 75% and or two thirds relative to compliance monitoring for each of those regulations. Because it's there was no definitive spot to say, okay, well, the the ground lines, excuse me, the buoy line starts here. And so the nature of this proposal is to just to give a definitive place in the regulation where we can say, you know, the ground line, the the ground line ends no greater than 12 feet from the first gangeon on or the last gangeon in this case, on either end of a trawl. And so that gives us a point from which we would begin to then measure for compliance relative to the 75% rule for gear marking and for and for weak inserts. And so this this change would move the buoy line marking rules from also from 322 CMR for for fishing equipment to 322 CMR 12.00 under protected species to better reflect that these are protected species management rules. And so this is kind of an administrative change that we're proposing as well. And then update this proposed section of the regulation to better reflect the current status of protected species management. And so this will also improve and organize the readability of 322 CMR 12.00. So with that, I will take first clarifying questions. Suki, you are recognized.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. You had said two thirds of the buoy line could be poly. I thought it was a third. I'm not sure.
I, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I I misspoke. It's the it's the the two thirds must be the sinking part. So you're correct. It's the bottom third that can be floating. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, okay, Bob, thank you.
Steve Petruska?
How you doing?
Very good, Steve, thanks.
So you guys said, when you were just saying that about the the new splicing in, you know, the 12 feet at the end of the first gangeon to the end line. So I use like figure eights or dog bones or whatever they want to call them, you know, because I fish in a current and stuff. And I find they get tangled up if I just place them or tie them at, you know, the end line to the end of the trawl to ground line. Is is that something that splice is going to be like a permanent thing? Or will you be able to use like a figure eight or other means?
Yeah, so that 12 feet refers to the point of attachment of the trap. In this case, we use the term gangeon because folks use gangeons, but of many folks use gangeons. But if other folks use a figure eight or a dog bone or something of that nature, it's just essentially, we just need a reference point from where the the first trap is inserted to where the ground line ends.
Okay, I got you. Yeah. So as long as you got that point, you're all set. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Steve, you have another question? I saw your hand went back up.
No, I'm sorry about that.
All right. Colin Erkhart, I saw your hand up. There we go. You should be able to unmute yourself, Colin, if you have a question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so for a lot of guys, I see now splicing a loop at the end of the ground line and then connecting it with a becket is acceptable?
Yes.
As far as you're looking for a point of termination.
Right, so we're we're not, we're not trying to change or dictate how a fisherman attaches his buoy line to the ground line. We're just looking for a definitive, we're just saying that under this proposed rule, we need a an exact point where which we we would say this is where the 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 ground line ends and the buoy line begins. And so we're saying that at that point, it is is not a specific connection. It's just 12 feet away from where the the last trap attaches or the first trap attaches.
Understand that and working for many different boats out of Southeast Mass, I see it being a a becket would be the point of termination from the ground line to the vertical line. As far as how you can't find a definition in between, I I know no one who splices their end lines to their ground lines. So I don't see how you can't find a point of termination from where the last trap is to whether the guy, you know, maybe he puts six feet or maybe he puts 18 feet from the last trap. But either way, he has to terminate it to an end line at one point. That's all.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying and that aspect where?
Yeah, I think in many cases, I mean, yes, I totally understand what you're saying. And in many cases, that that is clear. But having hauled and looked at many different gear conventions, we see a lot of splices. And we did not see any consistency in in the distance. And because when monitoring compliance and and when enforcement's enforcing the rules, they need to be able to measure the top 75%. They have to, there needs to be a definitive place for where that 75% begins. So we're just.
Understand that, but when transferring from a ground line to a vertical line, it should be blatantly obvious.
I I'm going to jump in, Bob, for Bob. In most cases, it is. Bob and I dealt with a lot of what I could best describe as Frankenstein gear this winter and spring. And in many cases, it wasn't as obvious as you think it would should, it should be. Or it could be. And and that's kind of why we're we're bringing this up now is, you know, in going through some of, you know, probably the worst compliant gear we found out there. You know, there were other problems with it beyond that, but it made us inspecting it. It it made it complicated to figure out. So we're just looking to see if there isn't an easier way to define that connection or give it at least a terminal amount of feet in front of the first connection for a trap.
Okay, I guess in some sense, I understand where you're coming from with that, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're not trying to regulate in any way how you connect. We're just trying to figure out if there's a if there's a better definition for buoy line that could define that connection, given the presence of some pretty Frankenstein gear out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Colin. Jared Drake, good evening, Jared.
Hey, Jared. Just for clarification, maybe in the proposal, the first paragraph changed splices to attaches, just to make your.
Yeah, great suggestion, Jared. Thanks.
Steve Petruska?
Yeah, hey, just just wanted one more thing to clarify. So you guys basically, as long as you got less than 12 feet from the gangeon to your point of attachment, you're good.
That's what we'd be looking for for the cutoff, yeah.
Okay, and and honestly, it's not even necessarily that you you only have 12 feet there. We're just saying we're going to start measuring after 12 feet.
I got you. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, Bob, I'm not seeing any more hands raised on this one.
All right, very good.
We'll move to the next slide momentarily.
There you go, Jared.
All right, seamless even.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so next on the agenda tonight is a proposal relative to the proposed welk gauge size increase schedule. This proposal was based off a petition that we received from the whelp fishing industry or specifically one of our whelp dealers and processors. And the proposal is to delay the one eighth inch increase to welk gauge size by moving from a biennial schedule to a once every three year schedule beginning in 2023. The rationale is that we're trying to address industry concerns about declines in whelp fishing effort and landings and potential loss of shoreside infrastructures. And and again, as I mentioned, we're responding to a public petition from the Mass Cog Association and Big G Seafood. Some additional background here is that initially, Division Marine Fisheries put this schedule of gauge increases in place because the whelp stock in Massachusetts was showing that signs of both being overfished, that overfishing was occurring. Studies that we've conducted on the size of maturity maturity shows that female whelp do not reach a 50% maturity until they reach a shell of three and seven eighths inches shell width, which also corresponds to a gauge width of three five, three and five eighths, which is our, you know, the final implementation target is to get the maturity up to 50% so that at harvest, 50, at least 50% of the whelp female whelps harvested would have the opportunity to spawn once prior to being harvested. In 2019, DMF implemented a 10 year schedule of one eighth inch biennial gauge increases resulting in a terminal gauge increase of three and five eighths by the year 2029. This is a slow growing animal, so gradual changes were put into place to try to offset the economic impacts. And then and so that's why we did only one eighth and why we did every other year. However, we we did receive, as I mentioned, a petition that will delay this milestones for spawning stock protection, but the petition is seek to balance this against long term viability of fishery of the fishery and shoreside striding infrastructure. So essentially, what this does is it slows down the rate of gauge increases and gives instead of just every other year, it gives every, as I said, every third year. And so we would be reaching that final size of 50% maturity at a gauge size of three and five eighths by the year 2033 under this proposal, instead of the year 2029. And with that, I'll take any clarifying questions.
Al Madiris, good evening, Al.
Al, you're you're recognized. You're welcome to unmute yourself and and we'll take any questions you have. Yes, we have you. Yep.
This is actually Representative Cabral.
Oh, good evening, Representative Cabral.
Good evening. How's everyone?
Very well, thank you.
Good, good. Well, I'm going to be quick. I will be submitting written written testimony on this particular item. But I just wanted for the record as well to, I'm here in support of this petition. We've been having, as you know, with you and with the division and with S Mast, quite a number of meetings around this this particular animal, I may use that term. As you are, as you know, we know very little about this animal. And and hopefully, S Mast with their studies that they ongoing studies, we can get a better understanding of of the behavior and the kinds of things that we really don't know about this particular species. I believe it is it is sound to to actually propose the the change on the gauge from in every two years to every three. I think we'll give an opportunity to to give an opportunity for further work to be done, for the studies to be done on this animal. And at the same time, give an opportunity for the fishermen to, or the fishers as we are, tonight changing that term. Fishers of the conch also have, in order to survive right now, the landings of this animal is substantially lower than what it was at its peak. It's under 1 million pounds right now. And and we we all understand that it's important to manage this species as well. I I think we need to manage it in a way that doesn't put the fishers out of business. Because less and less folks are going out to fish this particular animal. And that will put in jeopardy also all the onshore infrastructure that exists presently. And most of that processing stuff takes place actually in the city of Bedford, which I represent, I should have said that at the beginning. I represent the 13th Bristol District in Bedford. And I've been working with both the conch association, both with the division and of course with S Mast. So we can get to a place where we all can or reach a consensus, if you will, of how we move forward. Want to protect, to protect this species, but at the same time, not do it in a way that is going to put people completely out of business and shut down this particular industry, this particular industry in Bedford. So I mean, I'm encouraged by some of the work that has been done up to now, some of the conversations and discussions we've had. And certainly, this petition to amend, the gauge is, it would be very important for that work to continue, the work of other known for the study and the studies that S Mast is working on. And provide some relief at the same time for the fishers. At the rate that it's going, not only the less landings, but at the rate that it's going, pretty soon you're going to have just females. And because females obviously are the ones who grow larger. And and we, if we don't adjust this, I think we run the risk of of potentially ending up with mostly females. And I think just having females, it's not good for the for this particular animal as well, right? So I'll leave it at that. I I will submit written testimony, but I strongly support this proposal. And and my hope is that the division and the board takes this under consideration and approves this this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Cabral.
Jared Drake?
Hey, Jared. I guess this is a comment for the comment section and a follow up with a question. Comment, my name is Jared Drake, and I was involved with Steve Wilcox during the division's initial study that came up with these guidelines. A few years before, I also worked with Brad Stevens and a two year conch growth in sexual maturity study. I I actually supported the division with their in 2019 with the gauge increase because I do believe something had to be done. But in the meantime, well, when I when I was suggesting every two years, it was intentionally to keep the fishery viable, but in the meantime, I thought we'd be continuing more research because both studies were very limited. And I noticed because I was part of them, there's a lot more that we can learn. And I was hoping that that would continue, since it has not. I support extending it to every three years or longer so we can get some more data coming in. And what I'm confused about is why any biologist would not want more data? Why weren't we in the last four or five years looking at more studies? I have a freezer full of cogs, a chest freezer full of cogs from the study from 2010 and 11 that needs to be looked at. Nobody wants to look at them. So I guess that's my question. So I'll finish with that.
Okay, so your question is, is if I could summarize this, Jared, is why, why haven't the division? the division conducted additional welt research?
That's more rhetorical. I mean, we all kind of know why, but I was hoping we would, you guys would. But I think now it's to the point to squeeze you two.
Okay, well, thanks. I'll, I'll, you know, I'll just respond, you know, kind of generically in that, you know, the division does continue to monitor, do fishery dependent monitoring and fisheries independent monitoring for channeled welt. We have not revisited additional biological studies like maturity because we conducted that study twice in which we processed over 1,500 animals. And, you know, the resources that we allocate relative to research and monitoring for, for all species, including all vertebrate species are usually proportional to their, their landings and value relative to how much staff time we have available and manpower. And so with that, you know, we have not revisited doing maturity studies. In addition to that, because there's been skepticism about the results that the division published in 2021, although it was published in a peer-reviewed journal manuscript, despite that, there still continues to be some skepticism. And so at this point, I think, you know, we feel it's best for an independent body, maybe like SMAST, to conduct a maturity study to see if we, if we got it, got it right. And so with that, you know, we're hopeful that continued work through SMAST will continue to shed light on this and, and we'll, Marine Fisheries will support that and continue to do the biological monitoring that we do. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, Bob, I didn't want to put you on the spot with that. I bend your ear pretty much every time I see you about this. But I just wanted it on record for the recording here. And part of that skepticism you've been getting is from me, who's been part of the initial studies. So I just wanted that out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
John Moran? John, you're recognized.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, John.
Okay, I'm John Moran, I'm a volunteer with the Mass Conch Association. And I want to just say that the Mass Conch Association is in support of this third year in between size increases instead of two years. And the, you know, we, the Mass Conch Fishery is a very important small boat, nearshore fishery. And it's very important to our economy here in, you know, the southern side of Cape Cod in southeastern Massachusetts. And we have some major concerns about losing some more fishermen when people stop fishing for this animal. They, we're going to lose infrastructure and we do not want to do that. So we think this is a very important first step in moving forward here. And that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you very much, John.
Hello?
Hi, this is actually Rep Hendricks.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Rep Cabral already spoke. So I'm also going to be very brief. Again, my name's Chris Hendricks, I'm a state representative, I represent New Bedford and the Cushingit, but most, mostly New Bedford at this point. I just wanted to speak in favor of this rule change, as you know, Representative Cabral highlighted and John just recently highlighted. I think this rule change would, would do a whole heck of a lot of good for this small, very small, small boat in fishery. It will allow more time to do some, to do studies and stock assessment especially. But more importantly, it would, it would give some breathing room to these, you know, these fishermen who have been dealing with significant decline in landings for some time now. And I think this, you know, among other things, would alleviate that pressure. And also, you know, given that I think, you know, it's two years or three years, I think it's a pretty reasonable, manageable, still well-balanced move if it were to be done. And so I just wanted to be on the record for that. You know, there's, you know, we had many discussions with, with the director and all the interested parties on this issue. And I think, I just wanted to thank you for that and for hearing our concerns. But certainly getting this, this change for this fishery would do a whole hell of a lot of good. So I just wanted to be on the record for that.
Thank you very much, Rep Hendricks.
Steve, you're recognized?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, good evening.
Hello, yeah, I'm part of Roger Kuhun Jr.'s official fishing vessel Winkle team. And we're in favor of the gauge size time extension and we wanted to add a few comments. Some introductory data points with regard to sex ratio data. We did five surveys of 200 animals at a certified dealer. And we had the whole organism pulled from the shell and analyzed. Between two and 13 males per 200 conchs were present out of that survey. A sex gender imbalance will lead to suboptimum outcomes counterproductive to conservation and sustainability. Over time, these size rules and regs will eliminate the species. Males might not reach new gauge rule sizes in some areas. Conchs are habitat specific. An example would be conchs from Nantucket reaching bigger sizes than conchs from Buzzard's Bay. The one-size-fits-all approach to conch rulemaking inaccurately targeted is inaccurate, accurately targeted and is not helpful to human fishers or the conchs. Conchs are predators of high-shell clams. So the question is, is DMF picking unknowingly a winner and a loser with new regulatory size General observations too with regard to the gauge generally. In a way, it's clumsy and it's not simple and can be manipulated. And there's a lot of, you know, a lot of discussion about that. So we'd like to get it back to a simple ring where both law enforcement and the fishers can easily be in agreement with what's being measured. We also think, you know, what's going on in neighboring states is important. An example would be Rhode Island having a box gauge that's two and a half inches high. And Connecticut and New York seeing the conch as a predator primarily. That, the, the other thing we were thinking about was the trial surveys done in August when conchs are dormant may be leading to bad data. And, you know, poor data leads to poor policy outcomes. So we were thinking the surveys should be done more frequently or monthly, May through November. You know, we're agreeing with the other comments that, you know, this is a special, unique part of Massachusetts. And finally, we're, we're thinking about how the state or the Fed could fund research for folks that have been successful in other areas. So prioritize performance in, in research. And there are a couple of folks, you know, we had in mind. But anyways, that's it. Thanks for your time. And again, we're in favor of extending the time.
Thank you very much.
Tom Turner, Tom, how you doing?
Hi, I'm doing good. Thanks for having me. And I just had a, and that was, do you have preliminary statistics about landings from this year? That any discussion that we are having is contingent on data? And that is one piece of data that is available, whereas the stock assessment data is, is just a big question mark. And I, as well as many fishers out here, see square miles of bottom that's just choked with, with conch that's, that's not ever going to make a size. And that, the last comment I have to make is that the end size in either 2029 or 2033 is, would be a harvest of almost 100% female conch, which is, it sounds like biological insanity to me. So I was wondering if you could comment on what our harvest has been this year so far? And also any discussion with the commission members would, would certainly be more informed if those numbers were up. So if you could comment on that, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, Tom, I don't think we're prepared to, to have those numbers, the landings numbers for this year tonight, but we're happy to have staff circle back with you and provide those. And certainly when we bring this forward to the commission, we'll give an update on all welt landings for, for this year and, and those in the recent past.
Bob, I'm not seeing any further comments on this subject. Oh, Heather Hagerty. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. I just want to thank the commission for consideration of this petition. And all of the comments tonight were excellent. I want to reiterate the fact that I am purchasing 80% now of my conchs outside of Massachusetts. And that I am losing more fishermen who are not interested in fishing for conch because they can't catch enough and their traps are all coming up full and they have to return them back to the ocean. And secondly, here in the plant, the conchs we do have from Massachusetts, when we're shucking them and pulling the animal out of the shell, we are seeing maybe two to 10 male conchs out of 200. We have painstakingly looked at this and we are seeing at this size that we're getting mostly females. And we still do not have a sex ratio study. And like Tom said, at the ultimate goal size, it will definitely be all females. So I, I think it's very important that we slow down and add more science to this. And I guess that's all I have to say at this point. And I thank everyone for taking part in this and all of the support. And I hope that the board sees fit to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Hi, I just wanted to appreciate you having this and I look forward to hearing some of the preliminary landings data because the first part of the year was very thin in Nantucket Sound. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Jared Drake?
Hey, how you doing? Just a quick, quick comment for clarification for the, the board, the panel and, and people listening that may not know. When we talk about landings are down, it's not because of the lack of conchs, it's direct result of this management. The gauge size gone up where we're not catching as many, but the traps are still coming up full. So I just want to point that out on record. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
All right, Bob, now I'm seeing no more hands raised on this. So we'll move on to the next subject and I'll give you, oh, I say that and there's one more hand raised.
Yeah, so, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Colin.
Okay, I would like to thank everyone for their time here. And I'd also like to add that I'm seeing the same conchs pots full of conchs and no keepers, throwing back 90 plus percent. So I am also in favor of the three-year, or maybe more, agreement that is potentially a hand.
Okay, thank you, Colin.
Hi, I also wanted to mention...
Heather, you dropped off.
One of my observer on the boat. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, it might be my internet connection. I have a fisherman on the Cape who had an observer on board and she counted all of the conchs that he brought up. And 73% of all the conchs in his traps were returned. And I just wanted to add that to the comment.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
All right, Bob, I'm going to say third time's the charm when I'm not seeing any other hand raised. All right, so I'm going to move on to the next slide to give Bob a break, speak, he can take over for a minute. The next item is a, we're going to shift geography a bit and go up to the other Cape and Cape Ann. And it is a wintertime exemption to, or an extension of a wintertime exemption to Area 1A, which is that green area off Gloucester and Rockport. That area is currently open to mobile gear fishing from February 1 to March 31. And we're looking to extend that open mobile gear fishing period through May 15. By way of background, the North Shore's waters have been closed inshore, you know, I talked about the three mile line year round to mobile gear fishing since the 1930s. That was historically enacted by the legislature to prevent gear conflicts with trap fishermen. When the management of Marine Fisheries was handed over to the Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission and the Division of Marine Fisheries in the 60s, that moved from state law to state regulation. And over time, DMF and the, and the commission have worked to carve out time area exemptions to mobile gear closures, including Area 1A as well as Area 1B, which is a similar sliver of water heading from Rockport up to, up through Ipswich Bay to provide seasonal access to certain fisheries such as sculls, whiting. At times and in places where gear conflicts are expected to be limited and there's likely limited interaction with spawning groundfish. With the fixed gear fishing closure in state waters, specifically the trap closure in effect to north of the Cape from February 1 through May 15, unless it's, you know, opened earlier should the right whales leave. We should not expect that there's going to be gear conflict in this area off Cape Ann during April and early May. So with that in mind... during April and early May. So with that in mind, should there be a exploitable biomass of sea scallops in that area, which there has been in recent years, you know, we, we don't see a need to restrict mobile gear fishing access in there. It's an area that's already open and fish during the winter and spring. We know that there's, there can be exploitable sea scallop biomass in there. We don't anticipate it's likely to have a substantial impact on direct or indirect groundfish fishing, given seasonal availability of groundfish and overarching closures. I'm going to jump to the closure component. You know, as you'll, I'm going to show you a couple of, you know, kind of overlaid maps here that show groundfish closures and mobile gear closure. So from February one to April fourteen, groundfish fishing is allowed in, you know, Mass Bay and the Green Area as well as any of the, you know, non-marked areas. The red checked area is a winter flounder spawning closure, which runs from February one to May thirty-one. And then the pink area behind that is the North Shore mobile gear closure, which is year-round. So you know, under the current opening, groundfish fishing can occur in that green area during the winter months. However, we don't see much of it given seasonal availability of groundfish. We'd expect that would be similar in early April as well. So then moving into the second half of April and May, there would be no ground fishing in that green area because it would be closed to all commercial groundfish fishing. So that would be any groundfish incidentally caught, be it roundfish or flatfish, would would have to be discarded. We don't anticipate that, again, we don't anticipate there would be much of a catch. So during April and May, or the second half of April and the first half of May, that would be, you know, entirely a sea scallop fishery occurring there. Although we expect it would be principally that during April and May anyways. So getting back to the proposal, in terms of groundfish bycatch, we, we don't expect there will be much groundfish bycatch and sea scallop dredges is limited due to gear configuration, specifically that one requiring ten top, ten inch minimum twi-top mesh. And we analyzed some flatfish bycatch data from the federal observer program. We don't have a state observer program for, for this fishery. So we don't have good state waters data. So we looked at adjacent federal waters, the, the and to, as a proxy for that during this time of year. And we observed that the observed toes, which occur principally on still wagon and in federal waters just east of situated Cohasset, there weren't any observed toes, you know, just east of Area 1A that we could use as a proxy. So we used the area immediately to the south where there were observed toes. And, you know, we found there was very limited bycatch of flatfish, specifically winter flounder. We looked at, you know, thirty-eight LAGC sea trips observed and instead Area 514 from twenty eight, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two during May. January to May, winter flounder bycatch and discards were low with, with less than one pound of winter flounder being discarded per trip. We're hoping that with additional sea sample coming in Amendment twenty-one, there will be more observed trips, particularly in April within the Northern Gulf of Maine region, which may give us a better proxy for potential flatfish bycatch in the adjacent state waters area. So with that, you know, those are kind of the concerns that were raised to us about this potential opening. We, we do think that the bycatch and the groundfish catch issue is going to be minimal. This is going to be principally a sea scallop fishery. Should there be an abundance of sea scallops that give a place where these small inshore boats can tow, where they're not having to compete with the larger LAGC vessels fishing, you know, offshore in the Northern Gulf of Maine region. So with that, I will take any questions or any comments on this proposal. Lou Williams, jump right up.
Yeah, thanks, Jared. Yeah, I, I had brought this forward. Just to give you an example, because that area is just open February, March. And then it's open June fifteenth to September fifteenth. And there's been years that, that I don't want to see any of that changed. There's been years, it's been scallops here in June, but the last this year was a weird lopsy. It lops into the deeper water and June sixteenth, we went up to do a haul of the point toes and we just got there and took a little ride around and went home because there was a lot of lopsy gear there, you know, we just couldn't fish. So I just think to give more opportunity for that area. Because there, there are years you can't fish there when it opens in June because of, because it's there. So I just feel it's a good way to take, give them a little bit more resource with a few opportunities that are left in state waters and without any type of any type of you know, gear, gear conflicts, you know, where the gears are out of the water. So that was my reason for that. So, okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Lou. All right, I'm not seeing any questions or comments from the public. So I'm going to move on to the next slide, which is housekeeping. This is probably the most exciting slide of the evening. You know, as we go through these regulatory processes, I'm the kind of point person on that. And as we amend the regulatory language, you know, we're always tweaking things or have, you know, overarching executive orders to, to, to amend certain language. So as we have these public hearings on you know, fisheries management issues at the end, there's usually one of these slides that deals with kind of the, you know, the housekeeping matter. So today, there's, there's four of them. First, we're looking to eliminate the term grandfather from the regular regulatory code consistent with executive mandates, as that term has been determined to be potentially insulting or controversial, given its racial, the racial connotations of its background dating back to voting rights issues. We've also been instructed to replace the term fisherman or fisher or fisherman with the gender neutral term. Fisher, we're eliminating section eight oh eight of our CMR and establishing that as a reserve section. That section currently deals with it's redundant to other existing provisions, deals with maximum vessel size for mobile gear fishing vessels, which is also dealt with in another section of regulation and the winter flounder spawning closure rules, which is, which have been also moved to another section of regulation. So this is just getting rid of those redundant provisions. And then there's some typographical errors in the definition of black seabass pots with some of the escape fence, the fractions didn't print properly. I, I don't recall the exact size of the escape fence offhand, but the whatever two and five eighths or whatever it was, it was, it was printed. The printing came out with some weird configuration that didn't match what the actual gay, the, the escape fence sizes are. So we just want to correct that. And then there's a the, some of the mobile gear exemption area several years back, we, we kind of rewrote the mobile gear rules and some of the exemption areas are miscoded throughout the CMRs. So we're moving to correct those areas where they're miscoded. So if there's any comments on those, I will be happy to take them or questions. And if not, we can move to conclude the hearing and I'll pass this back to Story to do so. Story, it doesn't look like there's any comments on the housekeeping, so I'll let you close it off.
All right. Thanks, Jared. Thanks, everyone for coming and for your participation tonight. We want to remind you that written public comment will be accepted through next Friday, November eleventh. Please address written comment by email to marine.fish or by post to the attention of Director McKernan at two fifty-one Causeway Street, Suite four hundred, Boston, Mass. zero two one one four. And a reminder that a recording of this public hearing and the presentation will be published to DMF's YouTube channel tomorrow as well as the public hearing page. That's where the presentation will be. So thank you, everyone, for coming. Jared, we can stop the recording now. And if anybody has anything else they want to ask us, we, we could give them a few minutes here.